All right, welcome to the Town Council's special meeting for September 20th, 2017. We're in open a meeting, we pledge allegiance followed by moment of silence.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice in all.
So at the moment of silence, we reflect on our duties here as members of the Town Council and please remember our first responders and everybody in Florida and Houston and everywhere else in the country that's being hit pretty hard. All right, thank you. In accordance with the master laws, we're taping the meeting. Is anybody else taping the meeting? No? So the purpose of our meeting tonight is a special Town Council meeting to introduce the individuals that have submitted letters of interest regarding the vacant council seat created when Councilor Madison left. There are seven people who will have approximately five minutes each to say why they're interested in serving on the council, as well as telling the council a little bit about themselves. Based on the order which letters of interest were received, the time scheduled are as follows: Tom O'Connor will be at 5:30, Marilyn Gendy is at 5:35, Gendini?
Gendini.
Gendini, sorry. Teresa Berecki will be at 5:40, Anthony Gentile at 5:45, James Channing at 5:50, Warren Colton at 5:55, and Timothy Sealy at 6:00. The first person I'd like to have approach the council is Tom O'Connor, then all the others based on the order. The council will have a discussion at our next meeting on September 26th, and at that time will vote to fill the vacancy. And I just ask that the other candidates, if they're here, could step out while we talk to Mr. O'Connor.
The back too? It's good, hasn't it?
Hi, Tom.
Good evening. I wanted to thank the town for this opportunity to do this evening, and if I can, I'll go right into it since I know it's kind of short. When I first moved to town over a decade ago, I saw the need, I had the drive, had the opportunity in free time to volunteer for a lot of various committees that were available for positions. I felt that was a good deed, or there was a need, and it was a good use of my 33 years of corporate experience to spend some time on these committees. Some of these committees involved recently two committees, which the council has appointed me to be in the Bylaws Committee and the Town Manager Search Committee, most recent. I believe my experience and background of serving in the community in the various roles provides me with a unique perspective on how to improve our town, or help to improve our town. One of these improvement initiatives included my work as a member of a group of driven and dedicated individuals that formed to enhance our form of government, and that was pre-charge it. Basically, we got together and obtained over 1,700 signatures to put the question of our new charter of form of government on the ballot, as you know, which was successful, and that's one of the reasons why we stick it together today. Given what I've mentioned and other committee roles, which I'll get into in a moment, provides me with, I believe, a great perspective on town operations, budgeting process, and future challenges, and further demonstrates my willingness and commitment to serve our community over the many years that I've been here. Now, if I can, I'll get into some of my brief bio. A lot of the committees that I served on have been over a period of 10 years, and starting most recently, I served as a member, as I mentioned earlier, of the Town Bylaws Review Committee, served as a member of the Town Manager Search Committee, served as a member of the Capital Planning Committee, and served as a chair in its last year prior to the change of government. In 2017, I was honored to serve with, I was an honorary Town Manager as a Capital Planning Member Consultant, if you would, to assist her in developing the new budget, capital budget for this year, which is number of millions. I served as an elected member of the Charter Commission. I volunteered my time as a document management industry consultant to the town to help them with some of their historical and workflow issues regarding document imaging technology, which is in place today and relit by many town departments throughout our town hall. My corporate career, I was a versatile business professional with over 33 years of experience, had extensive leadership, procurement, and vendor management skills, as well as compliance, project management skills, working in the collaborative environment, experience in developing long-range planning, experience in developing budgets, cost-benefit analysis, negotiating contracts, and a strong background in process improvement opportunities. Currently, I'm the principal owner of a small security identity storage solution company, and as you all know, I've served as the animal control and animal inspection downtown for the last seven years. In summary, I would be honored to be selected to serve, and I thank you all for your service and personal commitment in continuing to make our town a better place to live, and I would be, again, honored to work with you in that endeavor. I look forward to using my extensive knowledge of town operations, functions, corporate skills to assist you in this important role.
Thanks, Tom. Anybody have any questions? Joe?
No, just thank you for your past dedication, it's really appreciated and the chance.
Thank you.
And your interest in this position.
Thank you. I don't know, you're trying to, you're trying to get it. You haven't learned anything from me yet? Tom, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you, Tom.
Thanks, Tom.
I appreciate the opportunity to be here. My interest in the Town Council stems from both the love of the town and a vested interest in the town. I've lived here for the past 41 years, I've worked in town for 36 years. I started in 1981 at Landry Lines and White Company, which was in the old City Line Pharmacy, which you're too young to remember even where it was, and I don't know if many of you remember where it was, but it's where this real estate is now. Used to have a soda fountain, it was a real cool little place. My daughter is a product of the Easton Meadow school system from kindergarten through high school graduation. She got a great education, can't say enough about the school system. She's a fine young lady, for anyone that knows her. I was an Easton Meadow Rotarian for 18 years, only resigning because of scheduling conflicts. I am a Paul Harris Fellow, and I think I ate more popcorn than I ever sold, my conscience is, and I'm sure many people can attest to that. I am a former chair of the, co-chair of the Culture Affairs Committee. I am a senior, I love seniors, I love working with seniors, I think I would represent them well in the council. I am a member of St. Michael's Church, I am a member of El Press Country Clip, I've been married for just under 49 years, I live with my husband Mel, man of my 129-pound German Shepherd, Luke, and I'm currently a sales associate at William Raves Real Estate, and I am a volunteer at Dick and Humane Society. And I invite any questions.
Amy?
Can you announce your name?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Marilyn, I'm 5:35, I'm Marilyn Gendini.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
So Marilyn, I have not met you before, thank you for coming and expressing interest. So, I'm not sure how familiar you are, if you've watched us on TV or not, we're a pretty collaborative group, we invest a lot of time and energy into preparing for the meetings and stuff, so maybe if you could talk to a little bit about some of these other groups that you've worked on, how you work with others, you know, what are your strategies for coming to resolution with, you know, on ideas and thoughts and something?
I'm a certified negotiation specialist in real estate. I have managed most of my career, I have managed real estate offices, I've worked with up to 40 different personalities, oversaw the budget, you know, the running, everyday running of offices, dispute resolution, you know, overseeing admin, et cetera, so I feel I communicate well, written, in oral, and multitask very well.
Thank you, thank you. Mike?
I'd just like to ask, did you think about running back when we initially started forming the charter?
I did, I did, but it was so crowded, I'm not, you know, it was so, so crowded, but yes, I did. I thought of it many times over the years, yeah.
Thanks for your commitment to the community going forward and express an interest at this point in time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Marilyn. Nice meeting you.
Thank you.
Hi.
Thank you for giving me this opportunity. My name's Teresa Berecki, I've lived here in Easton Meadow for the last 10 years, I have a seven-year-old daughter, and we recently just purchased a house off in Great Grove. The reason why I have interest in taking a seat with the council is because there are so many people in town that are my age who have either moved into town with their parents, or as we decided to have children of our own, have moved into town because of the school. Unfortunately, it seems like the general consensus is that everybody's too busy to actually get involved and put in their two cents, and I think that I would be a great person to be an advocate for the people in my demographic age group to voice their opinions.
Could you speak a little bit about your background?
Sure. I've worked in the financial industry for quite some time now, I used to work at TD Bank, as well as Citizens Bank, and currently at Mass Mutual.
Yeah, Joe?
Well, I mean, reading your bio, obviously you're familiar with the Springfield City Council.
I am, I am.
So some of your duties, I guess, involve running Cateri Walsh's reelection campaign?
I am, yep.
And so what is, you know, what are some of your thoughts, looking at our council in terms of team building and also being able to voice your own ideas as this young council moves forward?
I think just getting out there and getting involved, I mean, with Cateri, we try to be at every event possible, if not herself personally, either me as her campaign manager or one of her other interns. I think showing presence is a big thing, letting people know that you're there and that you're available. Sometimes it can be intimidating when you have an issue and you want to bring it up to the council, and if you don't know anybody, and no one has introduced themselves to you, or you haven't gone out there and kind of introduced yourselves to them either, sometimes it's overwhelming to try to bring up an issue and even start that conversation. So I think that getting out there, branding yourself, you know, letting people know in the town who you are, having different kinds of events throughout the year, I know that the Easton Meadow Parade was a great one that I walked in with some of you, but, you know, everybody looks forward to the carnival as well, and I think that more things need to happen in town to bring kind of a sense of unity amongst everybody, especially between all of the different age groups.
I understand, obviously you're a campaign person for Cateri Walsh, and having been on three campaigns myself, I assume that after the election, which is this November, correct, your job will be reduced there because I don't, you know, I'd hate to have any conflicts, because I know maybe in the month of October, should you get this position, you may, you may have some conflicts with events and things, but after that, I would assume you'd be fairly wide open?
Right, there would be no issues after November.
All right, thank you.
If not chosen for this position, would you have any interest in representing the town in any other capacity?
Sure, I would love to.
I mean, we have, you know, subcommittees, planning board, you know, vacancies always happen, you could have another vacancy here, it's obviously a moving target, so, I know I served on different committees and other people have as well, so we'd hate to waste talent that you bring, not chosen for this position.
Yeah, I would be happy to participate in any capacity. I work with a lot of philanthropy avenues, you know, as far as like the Jimmy Fund, I do a lot with the Jimmy Fund, that's something that my family has worked with for the last 20 some odd years, and I think that just, again, getting in front of people, getting in front of all these different types of groups that are out there, it lets people know that you have compassion, and that you're a person too. There are some things at the end of the day that kind of keep you up late at night, and if people feel like that they can relate to you in that sense, they might be more apt to coming to you with an issue or concern. So, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Question. Paul represents our millennial group. But, as Mike said, there's moving targets on the board. You mentioned, you know, kind of feeling a need to represent that demographic, is there something that you feel that has kind of been, you know, a gap between what that millennial group is looking for, the younger generation in general, and us not representing those needs in particular, is there something top of mind?
I would have to say just, it's more personal than actually the structure that you have here in town. There's so many of us that have to work two jobs, sometimes three jobs, and to take care of a family, a household, a lot of times, I'll hear my friends talk and they'll say, you know, this or that about certain issues, but they're not able to actually go out there and do anything about it, and if I could be that person to help them advocate those concerns, that would be great. I mean, I don't have that many hours in the day, I'm no different than anybody else, but I do prioritize. I wake up at 4:30, 5 o'clock every morning, go to the gym whether I want to or not. Unfortunately, I was diagnosed with Lyme's disease, and I just choose to make sure the things that are important to me, I prioritize throughout the day, and I think that, you know, it is a struggle, again, being head of a household, taking care of a family, and voicing those opinions at the end of the day, because sometimes you're just so tired. It's like, you know, do you even want to bother going out there and saying that, you know, something's bothering them, or that there's an issue with something that's on their street, whatever their concern is. If they have someone that they can talk to, call me up, text me, whatever it might be, email me, it might be something less casual, but at the same time, more concerns that I get might be able to bring that, you know, up to everybody on the board.
Thank you for the feedback.
Kathy, good?
I'm good. Appreciate your sentiment about your age demographic and the interest in getting involved.
Thank you very much.
That's refreshing.
Yes, and I would love to join you too, because I know that, you know, you're kind of outnumbered here.
I make sure that target keeps moving.
What, people that play golf?
All right, thank you, thank you very much, have a good night.
Thank you.
You're the youngest in heart, there you go. He also looks the best in his dress.
Hello? I believe I know everybody here except this guy, oh, that's right. How are you? How are you? How are you? Hello? How are you? Hello? 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 What's up, Tony?
Hello.
How are you?
How are you? I'm well.
Good, thank you. Floor is yours.
Um, I believe everybody knows, pretty much knows who I am, or should know who I am, I know everybody here, everybody's great, I was never really into politics, I started this...
Just say your name real quick so everybody knows.
Anthony Gentile, and I'm a junior. I'm not going to tell you by middle name.
I know it.
I know you know it, everybody else should know it. I never really got into politics, I started it about a year ago, a year and a half ago, with running for Board of Selectmen. I didn't like the way, in the beginning, the board was going, so I figured that I would like to do the right thing and run for Board of Selectmen as well. I've been in this town for pretty much my whole life, I've served 20 years with the fire department as a call firefighter, I have a lot of best in this town, kids are in school in this town, I started my family in this town, my wife actually works for the school department as well, I did two years as the director of emergency management also in Easton Meadow. It's really, I've lived here all my life, I want to see the town thrive and continue in the right direction, I'm very happy to see the way the town is going right now, and I'd like to continue that, being part of it as well, as being on the Town Council. I believe everybody's doing a great job, it's a great way that we took the, from Board of Selectmen to the Town Charter, I really liked that way. Then it went.
I didn't hear anything.
I really don't have that much more to say, I, again, I live and breathe in this town, I've lived in this town almost all my life, and I would like to see this town continue further and continue the way that it's going, so far it's been great.
Questions anyway?
You know, I can certainly appreciate your passion, your enthusiasm, appreciated working on the search committee with you.
Yes, that was another thing that was very, very rewarding, was working on that search committee.
Yeah, and you've put a lot of time and effort into it, and that was a very condensed period of time, we had a lot to accomplish and get through, and it was a pleasure working with you, it was awesome. Appreciate you volunteering for stuff like that, because without people like you that are willing to come forward, those committees don't get filled, it makes our job harder.
So I'll throw it out there like Mike did, so if you, for whatever reason, if this seat doesn't, you don't get this seat, would you do something else?
As in?
Another committee, or?
Oh, absolutely, oh yeah, if there was another committee that opened up that purred my interest, I would do it again. The committee for the Town Manager, first of its kind, how would you not want to be a part of that? So, I wanted to be a part of it, and I'm very happy with the results.
Need any conflicts with work?
There would be no conflict with work, I was on midnight shift, they actually graciously put me down to 4:00 to 12:00 now, so I can sleep like a normal human being. I am the second with seniority, so if I need a day off for a meeting, I can get a day off, or I can get a swap, so that's, wouldn't be a problem with work at all.
Our meetings are pretty vague, so you'll know well in advance.
Yeah, I will, yeah, I have seen them every so often in the paper, so.
Usually on a Tuesday?
Usually.
Usually.
Sometimes we have special ones like this.
I'm a special guy, so.
Tony, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
You're going to unwind?
Thank you.
Unwind the...
Thank you.
You know, before we, one thing we may want to note is that this position we're filling is only a temporary until the election next year, we said that at the beginning, but it's a fill-in until the election in June, or permanently...
You only serve the remainder of the term, and after running the election.
That's what it's concerned.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hey, Jim. Sure.
Tony, sir. Joe. How are you, Jim?
How are you? Jim, how you doing? Nice to meet you. Jim. Nice to meet you.
All right, you basically, as I say, you've got five minutes to tell us about yourself.
Really, I'm Jim Channing, tell you both professionally and personally. Personally, I live here in the town with my wife, two sons who attend Easton Meadow School, one's in kindergarten, the second's in first grade, active participants in park and rec and a lot of other activities in town. Professionally, I'm general counsel for Pride Stores, which again has some locations here in town, but putting aside from that, prior to that, I worked for Sullivan, Hazen, Quinn, an employment litigation firm, and before that, I was at the District Attorney's Office, DA's office. In terms of educational background, I was a graduate of Chickaby High School, I went to St. Anselm College, got my Bachelor's of Arts, and I have a law degree or Juris Doctorate from Hamlin University in St. Paul, Minnesota. I also have a certificate in dispute resolution. In terms of my interest in the board, or as to what I think I may be able to bring to the town, again, I think I have a unique skill set, experience, and knowledge that whether it's served here on Town Council with this great opportunity, or some other aspect, I just really think that the town's at crossroads, has the ability to provide assistance, and really look into the future as to whether it be the need to reorganize the bylaws, or potential need to reorganize the bylaws, where the ordinance is, but also look for untapped sources of income. I previously served as the New Income Subcommittee for the Springfield City Council, I was living in city, in the city of Springfield, and we were able to evaluate and see as to potential new avenues to get income, and a city like Springfield's obviously different than the town of Easton Meadow, but still we were able to look at other potential avenues, whether it be evaluating the clerk's office as to fees and fines, and whether they're at par with similar municipalities in the Commonwealth, or you look at other advertising avenues or other potential ways to benefit the town without being detrimental or a tax burden, whether it be on the business or the residents. So I think that's just a brief synopsis as to what I think I may be able to provide, whether it be on the council or some other way, I really look for the providing assistance to the town. I recently was appointed to the Zoning Board of Appeals, I think that was really difficult for me to even come and interview this, because that's a term that's set to expire in June, and I'm committed to that, and I want to be committed to that, but an opportunity such as this self, I couldn't pass it up, to at least meet all of you personally, and present myself to get to know you one way or another.
Thank you very much. Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I have, Mike, when did you become interested in joining the council?
When I saw the vacancy, I can tell you that, obviously when there was, the election came up recently and two seats were available, I didn't, not to say that I'm not interested in politics, my bachelor degree's in politics or political science, but I'm not really more of a, I don't see myself as a political junkie or someone that goes up for an election as opposed to the opportunity. When I saw this vacancy posted, I thought it was a great opportunity to present myself, whether it be for nine months only, and again, if you're looking for a commitment not to run for reelection, it'd be more than happy to do that, I don't know if there's been discussion about the council, but I just think that within these next nine months, that the individual that is appointed obviously would have an advantage for potential reelection, but also has an opportunity to provide great assistance, and I was interested, and I think my skill set, and that's why I offered my letter of interest, albeit at the $11,000 or $12,000, the deadline, I appreciate it.
You made it, that's all right.
I did, that's all that matters.
That's all that matters.
And there's nothing that would preclude the person who ultimately ends up serving from running again, there's no, there's nothing restricting that at all, so, and it is a double-edged sword, yes, you in some ways have an advantage, but if you don't do a good job, then...
No question about that.
So, yeah, so that is an ethical truth for that role, but no, thank you very much for coming forward, I appreciate it.
Yeah, I just wanted to throw one thing out there, I mean, obviously, there's only one seat, there's seven people, we're not really sure yet how this is going to play out, but if it doesn't play out, obviously you have a significant skill set to offer just with your background, I mean...
Yeah, I'd love to do it anyway, even if it's not on the council seat, absolutely, I'm interested whether...
I mean, just, I know you're out of a TBA, but, you know, if something else was to pick your brain even, you know?
Yeah, I've been known to give some advice over at Pioneer too.
Fair enough, fair enough, all right.
I just wanted a couple comments, first of all, I am delighted to see somebody in our profession with an interest, because there's been like a drought of attorneys trying to get, Bob, it used to be back in the day, it'd be a plethora of us in the, you know, politics and, you know, and I think I was the last one to run since myself, and so good to see you. Now, question though, just because this is televised, and people might be wondering, and it might be a Captain Obvious question, so, but that's what we're here for, there's probably at least, as far as I know, four properties that Pride has in Easton Meadow, there's two at the Rotary, there's the Romito's property, and there's of course the Plaza further down the street. Just so the public understands, many matters comes before involving Mr. Bolduc coming before, I'm sure leading the witness, go ahead, what would you do?
I can tell you that even if I felt that there would not be a conflict of interest, it's the mere impropriety, or the appearance that there could be an impropriety, that obviously I'd have to excuse myself, whether it be Pride or something that could be seen as a competing business to Pride. I mean, as business owners here, I think, you know, if a travel agency were to come into town, there may be someone that may have a vested interest as to which way that goes, and obviously, the appearance of impropriety would absolutely cause someone to recuse themselves. cause someone to recuse themselves, whether or not they felt personally that they could be truthful and unbiased in their decision. It comes to the people of the town, how it looks, how it appears. There's no question in anything involving Pride, whether it be with the zoning board of appeals or anything. If it were to be on the town council, then obviously I'd have to recuse myself and be more than happy to, even though I may or may not be unbiased and I have no financial interest in it. Again, the town people are most important, and you have to take their best interest in any decision you make.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chuck.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you for your time.
How are you?
Good evening.
Good, thanks.
Hi, Warren.
How are you?
How are you?
Thank you for coming. You can take a few minutes now and introduce yourself and then give us a little bit about why you want to, why you express an interest in the position.
Okay. My name is Warren Colton. I've lived in East Long Meadow now for 34 years. My wife grew up in the town. Kathy Roberts. Her family's been here for a number of years beyond that. I am seeking to participate on the town council because I think it's an opportunity for me to expand my service to the community. I've been a longstanding member at Bethlehem Baptist Church in Camden, formerly of Springfield, and served in a number of different capacities there, and am looking for an opportunity to serve in my community. So that's the reason why. When I saw the opportunity, I said to myself, huh, let me fill that out and take this chance to see what I could do. Questions?
I think first of all, thank you. That, you know, we appreciate, this is great to see the level of interest present company included. So, but if there was a situation, we have seven people applying, and if, for whatever reason, you are not selected, would you still be interested in serving the town? And if there was another opportunity that we can suggest or offer? We've asked this question of everyone.
Yes.
Or almost everyone. I think we forgot the first person. We're warming up.
Okay. Yes, definitely. As I had mentioned in my letter of interest to the town, one of the things was I do a lot of service through the church for a number of different people through men's ministry, and I saw an opportunity for helping at the Village Green with the air conditioning units, you know, helping to remove them or put them in. And I sought Ms. Booth's feedback on that. I hadn't heard back on that, whether or not, you know, they were interested in our assistance there. But again, just an opportunity to serve would be great, and in any capacity. And so that would be of interest to me.
Hi, Warren. You talked about your extensive leadership experience. Could you speak to that a little bit? And also, you mentioned working at the church, but what, any other groups that you've kind of worked with collaboratively, like how you work in groups? Can you speak to that?
Well, most of my work has been in teams, say, through a work experience. Through my church, I have served in other teams as well, outside of our normal area. So we've gone as a youth activity to Ohio several times, down to Tennessee once, to do a work, a work camp. That's a week-long opportunity to serve people, you know, with housing needs and things of that nature. I've done some junior achievement, not recently, but when I was back at Mass Mutual, participated in that. And also did kids voting. That, too, was back in the 80s. More recently, Toastmasters in the 2000s, and, let's see, but most of my work has been through the, through the church.
Any mail? Okay. Thank you very much for your interest.
Thank you. Nice to meet you.
Hello, everyone.
Hey, Tim.
How are you?
I'm good. I'm Timothy Sealy, and I am what appears to be your final applicant for the night, for the open seat on this town council. I've lived here all of my life. I have really been involved in our community my whole life, and I'm not going anywhere. I feel that generally, this is in and among the region, a uniquely situated and privileged due to that community. We have an industrial base and a residential base. It's generally a wonderful town, but since you are interviewing me, I would be remiss not to allow you ask me whatever questions you may wish.
What are some areas of community service that you've been involved with in the past or even present?
In the past and in the present, in community service, I have been involved in our town here for a very large portion of time in the last decade. I was an elected official as a library trustee. I was a appointed board member of our community preservation committee. I was its first chairman. I was on our short-lived green committee as well, and I was the town's alternate representative to the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission for a reasonable portion of time, I believe. Three one-year terms for that, and I was a long-term volunteer at the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission.
So, Tim, you know, I'm not sure how much you've kind of watched us over the last, was it, year, 15 months?
Year, 15 months.
15 months, give or take. You know, we work as a collaborative group. How do you see yourself kind of fitting in with that group and working to resolve issues in the town?
I feel that inherently, by its nature, any council in any organization of this nature must be inherently collaborative. I don't necessarily in any way believe in advocating for or arguing over items that are affecting the town in any truly hostile or over-emotional way. There are over 19,000 municipalities in this country, and we're just one of them. I recognize that while we have our own unique challenges, most of the time, someone has come across our problem before, and due diligence and proper research ahead of time will allow us to deal with whatever issues we have in an intelligent, respectful and expeditious manner.
Very good. Any mail?
Thank you for your interest.
Thank you very much for coming. Appreciate it.
Of course, ladies and gentlemen, of course.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming, too.
Thanks, Tim.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
All of you as well. All things for six, six pennies, not bad.
Yeah, we're doing, yeah, we're all right.
Nobody already is. It was funny, I said we didn't ask the first person to vote, but the town served that reason. We know he's right.
Yeah.
Mr. President, I make a motion to adjourn the special meeting?
I will second that motion.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all favor?
Aye.
All right. Welcome to the town council meeting for September 12, 2017. Normally, we'd open the meeting with the pledge allegiance in a moment of silence. However, we just opened the last meeting with the pledge allegiance, so I think we can skip that part. We are recording the meeting in accordance with the Mass General laws. We will move on to, actually, at this time, I take an entertaining motion to move 8D out of order to up to the top. Mr. Zampacini's here. He actually has a prior commitment.
So move.
No second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion?
Thanks, Tom.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. All right.
Hi, I'm Tony Zampacini. I'm president of the Historical Commission. I'm also a board member of Green Lawn Cemetery. I'm also on the community preservation board, and that's why I'm here. Stone restoration at the cemetery. It's in dire need, and that's why I'm here. Seek $10,000 to have 23 stones repaired this fall.
So if the council remembers, there was a stipulation, I think it was in the spring, Tony, to...
Mm-hmm, right.
Because the CPC process on meeting the open meeting laws and freedom of information had not been followed, we have since gotten all that in order. Their minutes, their agendas have been now filed legally, although it's in the past. At least, the public now sees that there was a process. We couldn't find the process to be able to say that the grant wouldn't be jeopardized if, in fact, the grant says you have to do X, Y, and Z in order to fund these projects, that we had no proof of that. That's been remedied, and I would recommend that we fund that.
It made total sense back then. It still makes sense now. But just a couple of quick questions. How long does the project take, and is there...
Hopefully, the fall. It'll be starting this fall.
Okay, so you'll be able to complete it before the weather turns?
Yep, yep.
That's it?
I have no objection.
So, but all in taking motion to approve the, it's a transfer, right, Denise?
Would they transfer to the historic, or is it something where...
It'll be just taken out of our comp, just for counts.
I think it's just...
Yeah.
So you'll...
Out of the historical account.
There's a historical portion of the CPC money.
All right, so the motion is authorizing that the sum of $10,000...
Sum not to exceed 99.
Or not to exceed $9,995 from the community preservation, historical preservation account for the cleaning and restoration of 23 gravestones and monuments located in the historical section of the Green Lawn Cemetery, which is located on calendar F.
Correct.
I made that motion.
Second.
Move in second, and is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Good, super. Thank you.
Thanks.
Good luck with it.
Thank you. I was looking for it.
It's at the bottom of the pile, I should read.
All right, now we're going to go back into our regular public comments.
Do we have to ask anyone?
Yeah, remember, they're recording.
Yeah.
My name is Raymond Miller. I'm president of the Board of Brownstone Gardens. As you probably know, Brownstone Gardens is 174 units of low and primarily low and moderate income housing here in East Long Meadow. It was built in three different sections. The first section, which was 100 units, now has the loan paid off, and we are looking to make some improvements in both BG1 and BG2. And we just want to kind of bring the board up to, up to date with what we're planning to do. With me tonight is Al Van Tassel, who's also a member of our board, and then Chris Carr and Chris Carr Jr., who are from the management company for Brownstone. And they're going to kind of go through a presentation of kind of what we're doing within, say, the next year.
Perfect.
Good evening. Can everyone see this? If I put something up here?
Sure. Did you bring chalk?
No, no chalk.
Do they even make chalk anymore?
My name is Christopher Carr. On November 1, 1975, I was the first person to move into Brownstone Gardens a long time ago. The Red Sox had just lost the 1975 World Series. Bernie Carbo hit a game, tying a winning homerun to extend the series one more game, but we still went home losers.
And I was working on post.
But surely thereafter, we opened Brownstone Gardens. And I've been there ever since in some form or one way or the other. As Ray told you, in 1975, we opened a 100-unit housing for the elderly financed with state bonds under the MHFA program called 13A. In 1985, we opened Phase 2, which is a 32-unit housing for the elderly financed under a HUD program called the 202 program for nonprofit sponsors. And in 1995, we opened Phase 3 across the pond, a 40-unit 202 development known as Brownstone 3. Those 172 units have always been filled and have always had a long waiting list, and we've been very successful on many different fronts. We're one of the largest taxpayers in town. We have long waiting lists, and we provide as good a service as we think is available in the open market. That said, we're not perfect, and we deal with problems on an everyday nature. Number one is cost containment, which we all are forced with our own budgets. Number two is aging in place, and this is something that we deal with on a daily basis. In particular, historically, if you moved in at age 70 and you lived there 25 years, you're 95 years old, all right? And when we built this, there were no elevators available in the budgets at that point in time. So the board, about a year ago, broke down amongst the subcommittee of the board, and they had focus groups with all the residents of Brownstones. And they sat with the individual residents and said, what do you need to continue to live here? What would you like about it? What works? What doesn't work, et cetera? And based on that, we came up with a series of improvements and thoughts and ideas that we're going to try to implement, where possible. This may be a surprise, but the number one issue was elevators. Again, if you, we have had, at one point in time, we had a 102-year-old woman living on the second floor. She asked to move to the first floor, which we accommodated. But that's a rash example of aging in place, but it's something that we have to end with. A second issue that the board has raised is fire sprinklers. The buildings, some of them are 40 years old. We need fire protection, although we've never had a, anything other than a small grease fire or something on a stove. It's still, there's multifamily, and a fire could spread quickly, and as a result, we need to be proactive in that regard. And third thing, the most important thing, is we have a common coin-op laundromat in the community building. At the time this was built in 1975, the experts thought that we should have a common area where people can socialize and do their laundry. That's great on the third Friday of June, when it's 72 degrees, and you live in the door, right next door, and you only walk 15 feet. If you live on the second floor of E-Building in February 10th, it's a different story, all right? So one of our primary areas of concern is we intend to add seven laundromats. In addition to that, since a major change in the laws since this was built is the Americans' Disability Act. So as a result, our handicap departments are being updated, more ramps in the parking lots, more additions in the community building, grab bars, anti-call devices, things like that that aid the aging in place issues. And that is the gist of our development thing. One last thing I can say is HUD encourages this type of refinancing now to do this because they need this affordable housing to keep going on. HUD really can't afford to build new deals. There are very little new affordable housing being built. There is some, but it's very difficult, and it's... There is some, but it's very difficult and it's very expensive. And HUD, in their infinite wisdom, has found that if you refinance and make improvements together with the savings in the higher interest rates that are now at near-record lows, you can make hay on a much cheaper basis. And that is the gist of our development. We have hired the firm of Carlson and Schmidt, who were the original architects and designed all three phases. And the board meets monthly and reviews progress on that date, and we hope as early as May 1st of next year to be in the ground, but that's not a guarantee by any stretch of imagination. If every single thing goes right, that would be the aim. And I am not predicting that everything goes right, all right? I'm happy to answer any other questions. You know, I've been there a long time, and we're very proud of it. You know, Carre Property Management, my firm, is in East Long Meadow, but this Brownstone, we're not the owners, but this is our flagship. And as Brownstone Gardens goes, my company goes. So we're attached to it at the hip, and we want it to succeed, and we think going forward that we can make the future of another 35 years happen here. Thank you very much, and I'm happy to answer questions.
I don't even know what to say to that, 'cause there's, that was quick. There was a lot of information in a short period of time.
Ray and Alan can verify this, I've never been accused of being quick. They will verify that, all right? I'll have to tell you whatever, whatever, this is a very far-reaching. The addition of elevators, we've been before wetlands, and we think we don't have any wetlands issues. We've been before planning for information, but we'll probably have to go back to planning. There's a little bit of confusion because of the change in the charter, because what we used to do, go to the selectment for site plan approval, we now are gonna go someplace else. There are some changes along those lines. And there is some additional square footage being added to the footprint of the buildings, which basically revolves around the elevator. I'm not exactly sure that we meet each and every setback requirement by the addition of that. There may be off a foot or something like that, we may need some small variance or something like that. So we don't have all the details. We're not, we're trying to make it as the path of least resistance, but there will be some resistance at some level. We're not, we're attempting to do a lot of different things. Our goals are this big, our budget is slightly less than this big, but we will persevere until we get it done.
If I may, to that end, that other panel that you have there, is that something that you wanted us to see?
I'm sorry, that's all. It was so short that I didn't even tell you the name. This is the site as is, and basically, this is Phase 1, these first six buildings here, and then Phase 2 was added here, and then across the pond, Phase 3 was added in 95. This is what we hope it will look like, the Phases 1 and 2. If you'll see, the addition of the brown is the addition of the elevator shafts, and the green is the addition of the laundromats, and like that. And long, long term, what we hope is that the original 28 parcel was planned and zoned for 200 units. We have built 172, and at this time, we're not adding any more units. We are gonna renovate what we have and improve it. But in the long-term goal, we hope someday to add one more building, which would be, come off and we actually use the same elevator shaft that's currently, we're gonna currently add now, and add anywhere from 12 to a maximum of 28. It's not gonna be 28, it's probably gonna be in the range of 16 to 18. We will probably not make the maximum zoning density that it's already planned and zoned for. But that's not part, that's now part of the thinking, but it's not part of the plan for right now. This is, it's more important to get the elevators in these buildings and stuff like that in there, but that is coming someday.
Now, to that end...
Yes.
How many people are on your waiting list, approximately?
I should have, several hundred. If you add all three phases.
So 12 to 15 units isn't gonna make a dent in that.
Let me just say this, right now, these are low and moderate income units with income limits up to 80% of average median income. The new building actually would be planned, would be for market rate. We'd like to add 12 to 18, 28, and maybe maximum market rate units, and that way, they'd have a totally economically integrated issue there like that.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks very much.
Is Charlie Smith participating?
Yes, he is. He's the architect. Don't hold that against me.
Standing this one.
Charlie is one of my closest friends, I guess I don't know, but he also is an excellent architect, all right?
Is he still down below Harrisonburg's building?
No, he's moved his office into his home in Hinn.
Okay.
All right, but he is...
So he's on Saint Germain?
He's, exactly, he's on Saint Germain, all right? And he's still zany, okay? But he is an architect, so. I'm not kidding about that. Then answer any other questions.
That's good.
Ray, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Raymond.
Thank you, thank you.
Good luck with it.
Thank you.
Council comments?
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Don, you have any comments? Let's see, I'm just getting, those patriots, huh? That was a long ride.
Watch out for the child, poor kid.
Yeah, no, our comments are, that house, that house they tried to draw on there, they tried to roast. They tried to do the elevators on the side. Yeah, I was thinking that. That's all my comments for today.
Create a site plan out of chalk.
Yeah, maybe you can just go like this and fix it, adjust it as needed. All right, Denise, you're up. 'Cause we don't have any comments. No, we don't. Yet. Yeah, well, okay, maybe.
Good evening, everyone. Interviews for the Public Works Superintendent position were held at the end of August, and we're already, our ratings, it's amazing. The panel consisted of Public Works Superintendent, me and our HR Director, and the unanimous opinion of the panel was to, that Bruce Finney was the best qualified candidate. After a second interview that included the council president, I've offered the position to Mr. Finney, subject to Section 1, 2.1 of the Charter, and you can see in my report exactly what it states. What it states is that we have to wait either 45 days or until the next meeting if the council were to reject, but there is nothing about acceptance of, or approval of, or affirmation of us making that appointment. What that does is it puts the candidate in kind of a limbo spot for the either 45 days or the next meeting. So if you're so inclined and you feel comfortable with my recommendation that Bruce Finney be appointed as Superintendent of the Public Works Department, and you affirm that, then I would think that the, that would mean that there is no rejection coming at the next meeting. I mean, to put you on the spot, and you can think about that and...
I just do have a comment to that.
Mm-hmm.
Denise, I did sit with him and Denise for, I don't know, it was probably an hour or so. Very good discussion that we had. I'm in favor of just moving forward, based on the recommendation and the interactions, I mean, personally, that we've had with the candidate and with Bruce, and I think we should just go ahead and do it.
Just quickly, though, I read the section, I don't see why we can't move forward, so...
We can't.
No, we can't.
We can't, if we say no, then they gotta wait.
We have to wait for that no possibility unless...
Unless everybody says yes.
Whether it's by consensus or something. And I have to tell you that Bruce has...
Well, I guess, sorry.
No, go ahead.
I guess my confusion, and I read the section, but it doesn't necessarily have to come to a vote to us, so we wouldn't reject it anyhow. So I guess, my understanding is that...
More or less if we reject it.
But why would we, since it's not under our purview, to vote on it?
Right.
That's why I'm trying to understand, if you feel like he's the most appropriate candidate, then you don't need our permission.
I don't need your permission for that, the Fire Chief and the Police Chief. Any others, I don't...
DPW, Fire and Police.
I have the sole authority. But those three, you have the ability to say you don't. You reject my recommendation. That's what that portion of the Charter says, so...
All right, that was a little confused, okay, that makes more sense.
So if there's a possibility that you think the, and it has to be roll call, vote, if you feel that there's a possibility that it would go down that path, then we wait the 45 days or the next meeting. If you all agree that it's not a possibility, then what, part of the issue here is that Bruce has been...
Hang on one minute.
Go ahead.
Let's just settle it. Let's do a roll call, who's in favor of Bruce?
I have a few, Mr. Bruce, I just have one...
Yeah, go ahead.
Question. My recollection is that when the position was posted, the preferred credentials included an engineering degree. And I have no objection to your recommendation, I want to be clear on that. I've spent many years working with Mr. Finney when I was in the school department. How are we going to manage that going forward?
Well, that's almost exactly where I was headed. When...
Go figure.
Once we get a Superintendent on board, then I can, and Bruce and I have already had some discussions, but it's all kind of a possibility until he's actually a Superintendent. But we, and I have seen an opportunity for restructuring the entire management piece of the Public Works Department. If you recall, the Town Engineer resigned shortly after, maybe January or February, shortly after, I think, I was appointed, and I took that opportunity to not reappoint because, or not hire somebody, because I thought, do we need a Town Engineer and a Superintendent that's an engineer? Then the GIS Coordinator found a position, I think, in North Hampton or someplace. So that position, and again, I said, things aren't settled here yet, let's see what we're gonna do with the whole thing. Now, with the new Superintendent coming on board, we've had, and I had the discussion with the two Superintendents that came on the interview process, and they said, really? If you have an engineer, in the meantime, what I've been doing is using consulting, which we would go out for a permanent consultant, but we don't have that yet. But what you really need is somebody on staff that has engineering background, that can put together the pieces of things like subdivisions, but they're not going to be doing big designs of schools or buildings or, you know, major renovations. That really is done by somebody outside anyway. It was done even when we had a Superintendent that was an engineer and a Town Engineer. So in readdressing the whole needs of the management of the department, we will be addressing the engineering piece as well.
And if I might add, in like the eight and a half years I've been in office dealing with Bruce, if there's anything to be said about practical application of, he's done basically every job in that department, many at the same time, and he's done it all well, so, you know, the studying on your feet type of thing is, he's certainly mastered that.
Yeah, great job with Pine Knoll as well.
Thank you.
So in terms of restructuring that department, and by outsourcing the occasional need for the engineering services, are you perceiving to have a savings?
It definitely won't be more, and I would think it will be a savings. And I'm, any place that happens, I'm looking to see where we can do outside, outsource some of the pieces. It has to be the management level, because the, you know, the rest is unionized, but where we can have savings or not replace, and really, we haven't had Town Engineer for, what, seven months? And it has been, not a blip on the screen, not a blip. So we figured it out, and I think the new organization will be one that you all will be very pleased with.
I commend you. Out of the box thinking, that's very smart.
No, I concur. I mean, I remember when Bruce stepped up, that's extremely admirable, I'm taking a lot of points with myself, and I'm sure the entire council in town for that. I was like, oh, man, I wish you could get this position. And he goes, you know, Don, it has these requirements and so forth. Well, I'm glad the out-of-the-box thinking is leading to this, because I couldn't select a better person, so.
Shows, you know, career pathing within our own organization, gives people the opportunities to move up that might not have been afforded, and you're bringing outside people that don't necessarily bring a lot more to the table and don't understand and know our culture. So from that standpoint, that's good stuff for me. Vote type?
Vote type. Counselor Ford?
Aye.
Federici?
Aye.
Aye.
DeFattick, aye.
Kathy?
The same, aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Look a little happier, will you?
He's going through the, be careful what you're waving on, babe.
Thanks, Bruce, for everything, honestly, thank you.
So congrats, we'll talk tomorrow. So thank you for that. That really is bringing a whole department to a different place, and as somebody said, thinking outside the box, that's always been something that I've stressed with other people, and you'll get to see, that's the way I think all the time. Is there another way of doing this? Is this the smartest way that we're doing it? What better way? Is there cost savings? Certainly, that's always been something that I offer. So I'm excited to be moving forward on that. A group of great veterans from the American Legion stopped by the office. They want to do a new Veterans Memorial. They're thinking about doing it at the COA, that seems to be their favorite spot at this point, but they need to come back. They didn't have an idea what their monuments would look like, how they would, his money, how much it would cost, who would design it. So I sent them back with a kind of to-do list, and they're already working on it, and they're very enthusiastic, and I saw one last night at the 9/11 ceremony, and he said, "We're working on it, we're getting there," so you'll see more from them. The Board of Health and the Health Department have begun working on Tobacco 21 Initiative. I don't know if you've heard about that. It is something that has been done by a number of communities, including West Springfield, Wilbraham, Long Meadow did an abbreviated version of that, so that it would raise the age for purchasing tobacco to 21 from 18. That's something that will, you know, be blossoming, it'll take a while before it even gets to be something that will be permanent.
I just have to chime in, if you don't mind.
I was gonna, I think I'm gonna say the same thing.
You can say the same thing. I mean, we have people that can go to war, that fight for us in war, and so forth, and I'm thinking, I said, I said 18 is like, you know, I mean, I don't know, maybe I'm just too libertarian, but it gets to the point where they can vote, they can do so many things, but to say, you know, and again, probably it's foolish to smoke cigarettes and so forth, but when we start legislating it, you know, I'm just thinking, it's just, we're taking away rights of citizens to make choices, and we're allowing these people to make choices into, going into the military, choices in voting in presidential or local elections. So I'm just, I know the good intentions and the health and the watching out for the health, but we're also, I don't know, I'm just, I'm struggling with that kind of, that kind of regulation, yeah.
And honestly, I have a similar opinion, you know, in the sense that our government's big enough, we have a federal law, they have, you know, requirements, there's lots of publication. I'm not a smoker, I don't encourage young kids to do it, but there's pretty strict laws in place and fines, and, you know, I believe that...
And what are cigarettes, like 10 bucks a pack or something?
Yeah, I mean, you know, and there's, you can't... Yeah, I mean, you know, and there's, you can't turn on cable television without a anti-smoking campaign type on there. And, you know, hopefully, it's had an effect where people are doing, you know, doing the right thing. So for me, to make another regulation and then try and enforce that regulation and then have some business in town sue us over it, I don't know.
I'll share those, I'll absolutely share those concerns with the Health Director.
You know, I'm not saying I wouldn't be open-minded to it. But at some point, you know, like I said, there is a federal law in the books. It is eighteen. People adhere to it. They abide by it. You know, I'm in line at a convenience store. I see people getting carded all the time. I see adults getting carded all the time. So they take it seriously because there's significant fines. Now, you're gonna raise it, you're gonna put the local business at a disadvantage because smokers will smoke. They'll drive, you know, down the street and cross the line into Springfield, who doesn't have the same law. So that's a little different than what we were talking about, you know, in kind of marijuana laws and regulations. You know, that's a little different to us, or to me in particular. But, you know, kind of less government, not more, is what I'm thinking, especially with this, it's just me, so.
I agree with her.
Paul, did you want to say-
I was just gonna make, I was gonna be a smart ass and just say, I saw the typo in here.
Oh, no.
Yes, the person's twenty-one or older, and instead of younger. And I was gonna say, my cigar is the best part of my golf game. I don't want to have to drive to Springfield to buy it. They won't play golf.
So you guys definitely weren't gonna say the same thing.
No, no. Now, he's actually thinking deeply.
Okay, I will share that with Amy. And as this progresses, like I said, it's kind of a long-term thing, I think. Before they get there, I'll be sure that you have the opportunity to weigh in. So although I'm waiting to see something in the Republican, I don't know when the Reader's-
October.
The Reader's Rave-
Comes in October. It will be out in October.
So Kevin actually got an invitation to the Reader's Rave Awards Dinner because East Long Meadow was voted the number-one town to live in. And that is a thanks to you all, to the devoted staff that we have. Last night, we were, Mike and I and Don were at something. Senator Lesser came over and said how he felt that the community had, and he didn't know anything about the Reader's Rave kind of thing. But he said that we are a much more professional community, and he finds it so great to deal with us now. So we should be very proud of our community. It's, it is a great place to live, and the people here voted for that. So that's cool bidding news.
That may change if you can't buy cigarettes here.
That you wrote.
Good news.
It's been a very busy time for appointments. I think, I think the difference is I'm starting to get to know people more and figure out how to get the word out to fill vacancies and in boards and commissions. And I'm doing a bit more networking. I have, I have had the town join the chamber. And right now, I am the main face for the town in the chamber. Don is a member as well, so we've seen each other at those events. But I'm starting to connect more with the business folks and able to say, in fact, tonight, those candidates that you had, I've got a board or a commission for each of them. So whoever doesn't get something, I will be contacting them because they all had strengths and good places that they might fit. So we've done a lot, a lot of that. I'm also going to the website because I need to see board and commission minutes. And for instance, the CPC stuff that I just made sure that all of the pieces were there. I'm doing that with a lot of boards and commissions. Some have not been following the process to get their, doing their minutes and their agendas. They're not following the process to get them on a spot where the public will read them. So we're trying to get everybody up to snuff on that. So I'm really pretty excited to have the public be able to find things easily on our website. It will also help them be more engaged, so.
Just quickly to that point, you know, one of our candidates did point out that we're old.
Didn't say it quite that way.
That's what I heard.
Ouch.
Talking about paraphrasing.
But all kidding aside, you know, modernizing some of the ways that we communicate, you know, we're not, we're not putting things out there in the best venue. You know, Facebook, Twitter, you know, those types of feed, the way that people are consuming information.
We do have an expert on the board for that.
I know. And he's an expert joke maker on Facebook, and I do find it funny. But the way we disseminate information to people, we can improve, you know, how we're getting people, you know, in there.
Engaged.
And it wouldn't be a bad idea, maybe, to get, you know, kind of a subcommittee together to get some ideas and thoughts. And then you have to put policies and procedures around how it's gonna be administered, who's gonna have access, how it's gonna be, you know, obviously, you know, information's gonna be read, monitored, and put out, you know.
That's an excellent suggestion.
Because I think we're way behind the curve. We're just posting stuff on a static webpage that people aren't linked to. They're not likely to find it. And I get that a lot. And I think you guys get that, and you obviously are getting it too. It's the same feedback we're getting from people, and they're somewhat unaware of what's happening or how to access information, where there's other ways that people are consuming information.
You make a fair point, because one of the things that we probably should do is allocate, it could be a small amount of money into social media marketing. For instance, I was speaking to Denise yesterday, and I said, you know, I didn't, I, because I, you know, I missed the email regarding the 9/11 event. I said, do we have a 9/11 event this year? Did we miss it? She goes, no, we're having one tonight. I said, great, I'll be there. And so I said, it's weird that I didn't see anything. So I went to the Fire Department's social media page, their Facebook page, and lo and behold, there it was. So I shared it on my page. And what's happening is, because, you know, you're not seeing all this on everyone's newsfeed. Now, if an event's important for cheap money, we can target East Long Meadow and have within our social media budget and be able to say, okay, we're having a 9/11 event. And everyone in East Long Meadow who's on social media, getting that younger crowd, and be able to see this and have it forced into people's newsfeeds. Because, you know, here, like you said, I'm really big in the social media. But even I didn't see it. And so what we need to do is probably find strategies to get this information out there. And again, it's cheap money, because trust me, I've advertised on Facebook. And we can do very targeted stuff and get important events, whether it's getting, you know, posting important meetings. Doesn't have to be the static, you know, every monthly meeting we have here. That can go up, and if, you know, people can seek it out, if it shows up. But events like the 9/11 event, the parade, other type of stuff. And allocate fifty bucks, or a hundred bucks, or something, from our IT department, whoever manages our social media account, and get it out there. And that's why when I saw it, I went, geez, you know, I didn't even see it. So that's why I reposted it yesterday. But it was, again, day late, a dollar short. I ended up posting around noon time.
I agree. And when I'm restructuring departments and hiring all these people and doing so much, the media piece has been a bit of a focus. And I've had conversations with- Tom? With Ryan. Marge has been proactive in doing some suggesting. That's a whole, that's the next layer of priorities. We can't, we can't have a healthy government in a vacuum. We need to be able to share that, and we'll find ways to do that. One very simple that I've already talked to Ryan a couple of times, I don't know where it stands, is if there's a way for us to have subscribers where we can, anytime there's a town meeting, not town meeting, but a town council meeting, they can subscribe to all the council news or all the Fire Department news, or all the, you know, whatever we're posting. And it just automatically goes out to all those folks. There's a way to do that. I had it done at the last community I was at. So there's lots of ways that are not time-consuming for personnel, not costly. It's just we have to take a clean swipe, and first, I want to clean up a lot of the site. We have, if you go to the Minutes and Agendas page, we have all the charter revisions still, the town meetings, the Board of Selectmen, all intertwined with the current committees. So we're gonna try, in fact, Ryan is doing that now, segregating them so that people need to see that history. But it doesn't need to be a part of what they, if they're looking for the meeting that we have next week. We need to make that easier for the public. The people in the town hall need to, and Tom's already heard this, this little speech, they need to think how the public would be thinking so that we start getting the word out differently.
That's a subcommittee, that's a good idea.
Yeah, yeah. So we will, we will get there. Thank you for your suggestions. As an aside, it's not on my list of things here, but I am going to planning and conservation meetings now. I'm the staff person, I guess. Our planner is still out ill, and I have spoken with her today. It is very difficult to have her working from home, half-days. There are things that need to be addressed in person. And I'm putting out the word to look for somebody, even if it's just ten hours a week or something, a planner specializing in planning that can be there to start to understand the planning bylaws and what we need to do to help the residents and the businesses grow and do what they need done in the planning area. So the fire chief ordered the new land truck. He's pretty happy about that. It's going to take nine to twelve months to get the truck here. So it's a long process. Also in the news, the Fire Department held its annual 9/11 candlelight vigil last night. I had forwarded the invitation to you all. Okay.
Yeah, I responded to you. I couldn't make it, yeah.
As Don was saying yesterday, he hadn't, he hadn't seen.
No, because mine, I read mine off a different, than you, not off this thing, and it had no subject line, so.
So I'll be sure to put something in the subject line, but it was a very nice event.
Next year's gonna be a big opportunity because 9/11 falls on our meeting night, Tuesday. And so if the new fire truck is ready, they always have a reception afterwards. So maybe we could have our meeting court buttresses the event.
It starts at eight o'clock, so, yeah.
We can talk real-
We can be there.
We can do that. Right now, it's seven. We just did a double meeting. Fine. Chairman will make sure it happens.
So it was a touching and thoughtful event. Everyone should experience it at least once. I'm going to be, and this is just so you know that I'm gonna be out of the office, I'm going to municipal, Mass Municipal Association Conference this Thursday and Friday. And I've written what the topics are. I found it to be very relevant topics for where I am. So I'm gonna be there. And unfortunately, back-to-back is the conference for emergency operations that, if anything, I thought seriously about saying, I can't do both. And I really need to do this MMA one. But with the hurricanes and all that stuff, you never know what's coming. Blizzard, you know, tornado, you never know. So we're really forming our-
You're just wishing us all good stuff, huh? Why don't you throw some wildfires?
You could say October snowstorm.
Throw in some wildfires and mudslides too, while you're at it.
No kidding.
Got the locusts.
Well, I'm very comforted that we don't have a, we're not adjacent to the Connecticut River. That's, that used to be one of our biggies.
Hopefully, it never will be.
But you're right. October snowstorms are pretty yucky. So we're really forming the emergency management team, you know, bringing it all together. We need to be there, make sure that we're up on the latest of the right way to do things. So Paul Morissette for the overall emergency management. Amy from the health perspective. Ryan from the communication IT piece. And I will be going to those three days. I am available absolutely twenty-four-seven, but not physically here all that time. I will be coming back on Tuesday for the planning meeting, so I'll be here. I also was very impressed with food drive that we did, that the town employees did for the COA. A hundred and eighty-seven items were added to the food pantry. And we had a little contest. The person that, if you brought in food, you got two tickets to the, to draw for the Big E. Olga in the finance office won the two tickets. So it was a job well done. Now, I've initiated another little contest. We're doing a shredding day. I think it's October fourth or October sixth.
October sixth, yeah.
And the department that does the most shredding, the most boxes and shredding-
You gotta be careful with that one.
I didn't say legal, did I?
Legal shredding?
They'll get breakfast on me, so we need to get paper out of there.
When is it? October?
October sixth.
October sixth. It's perfect timing too, because people go through their record retention schedule, and they go down to mark the boxes. Denise did a great job before day with DPW, the Fire Department, Police Department, so.
Yeah.
You mark the boxes, DPW bring it up behind the fire station.
And they, they still have time to send the requests over to the state to be able to destroy the records. Scan stuff if you want. That kind of storage doesn't cost us any footprint. But all this paper is drowning us, so we'll see if we can get rid of some.
An eighteen-eighty-two basement. You're right. It gets challenging.
That's all I have to report. Thank you all.
Thank you.
One quick side comment. I almost forgot. Since our last meeting, I got an email from Bruce Stebbins. We all know Bruce. And he was asking about what's the process to rename a town facility or whatever. So I reached out to John Whalen, who is the interim director of Pine Knoll. And they want to, what they're trying to do is have a movement to get the swimming pool named after Charles Sylvia? Sylvia? The one, the fam-
Coach.
Chuck Sylvia, yeah, coach.
Red.
And order the family that owned it and, you know, had it in the past. So that's something we might want to follow up on, is just what is the process to rename, or to name, for that matter, a municipal asset?
It would be a policy that we'd have to come up with.
Okay.
That you all would be a part of, I think.
All right, maybe we'll put that at, you know, some future meeting to talk about it. Because this won't be the only time we may have a situation to name a building or something after somebody or what have you.
Fair enough. I saw that email. I just-
Yeah, I just got John involved, but it was one of those things, we gotta do something. But I'm not sure where it's gonna go, and I figured Bruce would probably be asking me, any updates? And I said, yep, I forgot to mention that in the comments. Yes. Glad you brought that up. So, Don, you have any comments? Oh, yeah, I do. Here's something.
Okay, we can move on to approval of the minutes for August eighth, open session. I had a mistake because I wasn't there.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes. I didn't see any changes.
Moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then the executive session minutes from the same table.
I'll make a motion to approve those executive session minutes without amendments.
A second. Moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Communications correspondence and announcements, we don't have any, other than the town, the best town to live in.
Western Mass.
Did you ever doubt it?
No, no. But if you, if publicly somebody would've said that a year ago, I would've said, hey! Right! You're gonna win that next year. Okay, we are. You're right. It was actually a nice phone call from the paper. It was actually surprising too, because I didn't expect it.
Good stuff.
So licensing matters. Do you have a change of beneficial interest for Ninety-Nine? Ninety-Nine West LLC is actually doing business at Ninety-Nine.
Didn't you review this last time?
No, that was a change of manager. They had the short manager who quit. I mean, we approved that manager who ended up quitting, so they brought back a previous manager. So it's all manager stuff. This one, is it a new owner or something here?
No, this is about, there was an attached on the back of the licensing application.
Trying to figure that out.
There's some change in their board of directors, and there's a statute that requires them-
Oh, okay.
To go through this process to inform everyone.
Right, that's fair enough.
You have to go through the ABCs.
Yeah.
Yeah. Who then says, go back to the licensing authority. Great, good for you guys.
Nah, we don't like that person. Forget it. So, hell, of course.
So given, entertain a motion to approve the change of beneficial interest at Ninety-Nine West.
Second.
Move in second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Now, we have a one-day beer and wine license for the Masonic Temple for September sixteenth. Five to twelve with DJs entertainment.
If you look at, if you look at these applications, these are something that Marge has put together.
The new documents are phenomenal, yeah, yeah.
She's put, even, she's sent them around, you see the boxes that show where the police used to be that we'd collect emails from them, sometimes we'd lose the, now we, you know, the emails would get lost, we weren't sure if they replied. Now, it's all documented and she's done a great job.
What system is she using?
She made them all on.
I think it's just a word.
A word document.
Yeah.
She created them all on her own.
Yeah.
I was just wondering if we're using the munis because doesn't that do licensing?
Not, not well.
Yeah, it records, it'll record the money piece of it.
What is applied?
But, it doesn't do a lot of what you need.
Munis is very.
It's a good financial system, but the other pieces are tough, yeah.
Okay. Alright. So, I'll entertain a, actually, they have two, right? They have them separately. Entertain a motion to approve a one-day beer and wine with DJ permit for the Masonic Temple from 5:00 to midnight on the 16th of September.
Subook?
Second it.
Moved in second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We have a one-day beer and wine permit with DJ, 5:00 to midnight, approximately 100 people for 9:23 from the, for the same Masonic Temple, so entertain a motion for that.
Do I have to okay the psychic medium?
Yeah. If it was psychic large, I wouldn't want that.
I apologize.
You think they know, you think they know we're okay in this?
Right, they knew we were going to get it ahead of time.
Yeah, we don't want the psychic extra-large, okay?
Or the small, medium, and large.
Small, medium, and large, yeah.
That's a good one.
What happened to that motion?
I don't know. Okay. Need a second.
We need a second here.
Second.
Needed second it. Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Then again, the psychic medium knew we were going to vote for it already, so.
Already used.
So, we have a one-day liquor license for St. Luke's Greek Orthodox Church for October 13th through the 15th, 2017, 11:00 AM to 9:00 PM with abandoned Greek dancers. This one, actually, we are waiting on them for, I'd like to actually have it approved provisionally based on the fact that they have to get their TIPS certification. What else, Tom?
Get an updated certificate of liability.
Liability.
Getting the, the TIPS training certificates. But, the event's not for another month, but they are working on it, it's in process.
So, we do have another meeting in, we're expected to have another meeting in two weeks. I don't mind doing a, a, you know, conditional approval, but who's going to take the responsibility to check it? I mean, it's up to you guys.
Tom.
We'll have another meeting before they're, up to you guys.
I think it's not a bad idea to, to wait because Marge found out this afternoon that in the past, they've done 10 hours of serving liquor and what it actually, what the law says is that it's supposed to be no more than five hours per day. So, one of, two of the days they, one of the days they have five hours and the other two days they're asking for.
11 to 9.
For 10 hours.
Yeah, 10 hours.
So, that's something, she just came to me this afternoon with it, but I love what y'all want to do with that. Because of the call of the ABC.
Question in the back, you said no more than five hours?
That's what the ABCC says, for a one-day liquor license.
But, we just approved a couple, five to 12s.
Yeah, for, we're doing that forever for the, for.
Right.
Yeah, even our own beer tent.
Yep.
I'm pretty sure that's open more than five hours.
She just came to me like mid-afternoon.
Did you give clarification on that?
Yeah.
I have a call in to them also.
So, all the more reason to.
Yeah, we'll wait.
And also, also I have a question. We're, we're approving a one-day liquor license for a three-day function. Is it three one-day liquor licenses or is it a three-day liquor license?
It's, it's a three one-day.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, so I'm going to take the motion to table that to the next meeting.
And then on the next meeting, we should have those, all three listed separately approved, because the way that this is written, we would approve one day and only one day and they would have been.
Illegal.
And clarification on the number of hours.
Take it care of. I'd be surprised if that's the case, that doesn't sound right.
I, I agree, but I'm just getting a caution.
I talked to Marge a year later than that because she thought that might be just the caterer's license, not the one-day liquor.
Okay. So, we're, either way, we need to clear.
Okay.
Now, we can only serve food for five hours.
No, no, I think the caterers can only serve liquor for five hours. Food, they can only serve for three hours.
Alcohol and food go together like peanut butter and jelly.
That's a great analogy, I like.
Like green tea and shots.
And five, we have.
So, we're, we're tabling that for now, till the next meeting. Item four, you mean?
Four, correct.
Do you need a motion to table it?
I'll entertain a motion.
No, I don't. Just take no action on it. It'll carry over.
So, we have a post-approval of a one-day liquor license for Cafe Leoni for September 9th.
Why is this a post?
It's a post because we didn't, it occurred.
I understand that, but.
Because we didn't, we didn't have.
It didn't come in while we were only meeting once in August?
And they didn't have time to, to get to another meeting and do another meeting. And one of the things that came up that Denise and I have discussed and actually Mike and I have had a conversation about it, when you do the streamlining piece for all the liquor licenses and all that, that subcommittee looking at what the procedures are in the event that we don't have a meeting, because in the summers, we're not having those meetings in time to, to have them get in, you know, where they might be more than 30 days out or whatever.
Let's think back. So, what is our liability in that situation?
The 30-day rule is, I, I think.
It's a talent.
An internal rule. And we've just started that since, since.
We, we always had a 30-day rule, they had to have it in 30 days ahead of time.
Yeah, we have.
We never followed it.
When we were board of selectmen, we had that.
Right, we didn't follow it because it would be whatever, but.
Three days before and people were coming saying we've got this Saturday.
The Legion would be coming, saying they're doing a picnic for the, the blind or whatever and you're, like, you're not going to tell them, "Well, sorry, you didn't have it here 30 days ahead of time."
Now, we're educating them as, as they come in, "Next time, you can't do this, you need to have your 30-day notice." We're going to put it on the website, the forms are going to go on the website. So, we're getting there, but you can't punish somebody for something that we're just.
And even the forms, Joe, like, that whole process is just evolved, these forms are like never there, so it's like something that we're.
I know, and fair enough, I guess, I guess I'm asking just a general question, what is our liability for a post-approval? Like, we didn't know what was happening, they held the event, what if something happened?
Well, we know what's happening.
We knew what was happening, we just didn't meet.
We couldn't meet through program.
We, as the council, didn't, because of our.
Schedule.
Schedule.
They came through the whole, they came through the process.
They followed the rules.
I, I get, maybe, sorry, maybe I'm looking at this the wrong way.
Kevin signed it on behalf of the council.
Right.
Okay. That changes what I was going to say slightly. That has also.
So, I said that.
Stuffed in his tracks.
But, so someone in the town is accepting liability for it, so it's really not a post-approval because we are approving it.
It's more for your information.
It's informational.
That there has been an issue.
But, we don't have to accept all liquor licenses that come before us, the question is, like, if something was amiss or out of place.
We would not accept it.
We would not accept it.
It won't.
They went through the same process, they had their insurance on file, they did all this stuff.
It's really convoluted because there really is no repercussions at the point the event took place, they're gone. Nothing happened, but it seems a little.
Joe, they came to us.
Awkward to me.
And it was our schedule that prevented them from being able to sit down and have a vault on it, is basically what happened. So, they did the whole process, they paid, they filled out the forms, went through all the police checks and all that stuff.
Unless I'm wrong, and Jim can correct me on this, if the private entity or whatever, or it's a house party or a neighborhood party and they're, we're getting, giving a one-day liquor license, they're liable.
That's right.
For the actions of people, not the town. We're just extending a liquor license, we're not insuring the, the event. So, so, you know, we don't have any liability.
Okay.
They're submitting a certificate prior.
We have a responsibility to, you know, to accept or deny the liquor license.
Right, right. It's like the Boy Scouts, you're not going to accept it.
That's why I'm just, was asking you, yeah, just asking, what are like, but that, fine.
That's what I like about this 30-day wait period too, it's also a safety net for the vendor, if they have any glitches here, rapidly, no, there's time to make corrections, so it benefits both parties.
Yeah, well, definitely, yeah.